I will call the March 26 regular town council meeting to order at 6 o'clock. Mayor Mark Sukup.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Brett Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Lisa Lake.
Here.
Councilmember Robert Oxmacher.
Present.
Councilmember Luke Wagner.
Here.
Okay, we're going to start a new tradition here, so I'd appreciate if everybody'd stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And the flag's over here. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. Aaron, do we have any amendments to the agenda? Public comment?
You have three written.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Three written public comments in front of you, one from Bill Jenkins, one for Brian Kurth, and one from Rachel Spurrier.
Okay, thank you.
First up is Becky Spurrier.
Hi, good evening. My name is Becky Spurrier and I live at 4496 Haymill Court here in Timneth. I am going to be, just for a matter of clarification, I'm going to be speaking to the Everhome Suites Concept Review, the case number is CR 2023 0010. I am here tonight to express my concerns about the proposed hotel on the northeast side of the corner of Signal Tree and Harmony. I realize that this is still in the concept design stage, but I feel the time to let the council, the neighborhoods, and the community know about the issues as now before changes and variances are made to accommodate a business that is inherently a very bad idea in that particular location. I think it's vital to note that this piece of land in question is owned to RMU, residential mixed use. Page 57 of the Land Use Code shows that lodging establishments are not allowed in an RMU. One use that could be permitted with conditions in an RMU is a rooming or boarding house. However, it would seem obvious to all that Everhome Suites would not be classified as a boarding or rooming house, but rather a lodging establishment. I have many concerns about this hotel and this location, but the two I would like to express tonight are height and safety. As for height, at four stories high, it's going to tower over my Barrow Lane neighbors' homes and backyards. Having a four-story home immediately in the backyard of those single-family homes would not be in compliance with code. Beyond that, the other very serious concern is for the safety of the neighborhood and especially the children. Having a 24-hour business where travelers who are not invested in our community are coming and going right next to a neighborhood of young families seems undesirable at best and downright dangerous at worst. The purpose of a government is to protect its people and keep society safe. I wanted to express my concerns before this proposed hotel goes further in the planning stages. I am not opposed to development. I know it is vital for our town, but let's be smart about it. We can do better than this. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. I'm going to make a real quick comment. As you've fully noted, the council has not seen this draft nor has planning and zoning, so it's still way down the pike, but throwing out a comment is totally appropriate.
Gary Spurrier.
Hello, I'm Gary Spurrier. I'm Becky Spurrier's husband. I live in the same location, 4496 Haymill Court, so far. I echo all of Becky's concerns, but I want to make some additional points specifically about zoning RMU versus community commercial. As Becky noted, this is an RMU-zoned parcel of land. Just to kind of underscore what that means to us, Section 3.5.7 of the Timneth Land Use Code in part states that an RMU is supposed to provide a mix of uses, quote, "at intensities that blend well with adjacent low and medium-density single-family residential areas." Also, quote, "an RMU is intended to be a district with primarily residential uses." So it follows that Table 4.1 of the code doesn't allow lodging establishments in an RMU. So to kind of underscore this, it's only if we move from the RMU zoning to community commercial zoning, in Section 3.5.11, it's only there that it endorses CC zoning for serving the traveling public, okay? So as an RMU, we're just saying right out of the gate, we shouldn't build a hotel in an RMU. You could raise later the question down the road, if we don't put a stop to this now, what about moving this parcel of land and rezoning it to CC? And I would argue very strongly that we should not do that. The sheer size of the building, the traffic patterns, especially on a little residential street like Deer Park Avenue that would connect the hotel to Timneth Parkway, just the presence of transient, traveling public members that have no investment in the community in a neighborhood with lots of young families and little kids running around, just not a good idea. So to conclude, I agree with my wife, Becky, that we need and want development on that parcel of land, but it should be RMU development, development that provides businesses, goods and services, that will serve the residential neighborhoods around it, not bring in the traveling public at large. We're not opposed to another hotel, but we would argue that this hotel should be treated more like the La Quinta that's going in at Ladera. That would be a more appropriate, more commercially oriented zone for it. So we are urging the council to hear us and to, as soon as possible, reject this concept proposal out of hand. Thank you so much, appreciate your time.
Thank you again, and I will reiterate what I just said earlier. We don't even have the authority to reject the proposal as it's set there until it comes before us, which is two levels again before it comes to us. You were very articulate, but we really don't have anything to do with it until much later in the process.
Yuri Zubowski.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the town council. My name is Yuri Zubowski and I live at 4513 Barrow Lane. I would like to bring to your attention an artifact within the municipal code that is worth reviewing. Under Section 2.9 Procedures in Table 2.1, Hearing Process and Notice Requirements, the real labeled 2.9.9 Development Site Review currently has a conditional note in the Neighborhood Meeting column that reads as follows. Properties of two buildings or more require a neighborhood meeting and approval by town council. I would like to express concern with this criterion for neighborhood meetings. I was not present when the municipal code was written, so I can only speculate that the intent was to avoid requiring neighborhood meetings for the development site reviews of individual residential homes, of which there are so many that such a thing would be prohibitive. However, this phrasing creates a loophole for the development of non-residential properties whereby the proposal for a single very large building, for example, a three or more story building of nearly 60,000 square feet, may be able to move through the development review process entirely bypassing this critical step wherein the applicant receives input directly from the residents of adjacent and nearby homes. I recommend the town council, who are empowered to make changes to the municipal code, examine this caveat and consider amending this section with additional reasons for which a neighborhood meeting may be necessary. For example, but not limited to, exceeding the height of all buildings within a certain radius of the plat in the proposal and/or exceeding some square footage within a single building, for example, 15,000 square feet, and/or including a proposal for a large enough number of parking spaces, for example, 15. All of these criteria represent situations that would materially affect a neighborhood, especially one zoned RMU, and should therefore require the applicant to collect and record community feedback, the vehicle for which is a neighborhood meeting. While town council, the planning commission, and the town planner may be unable to legally prevent a business from entering Timneth so long as the development plans meet all legal and code requirements, town council can, in this type of instance, add transparency to the process, increase civic engagement, and ensure that Timneth citizens and Timneth businesses are positively aligned before construction begins. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll reiterate the same comments that I've made earlier. It is, we're putting, it's the cart before the horse as far as how this process works. I think your concerns are real valid, and I hope you bring them up later.
Casey Knode.
Because I'm saying the same thing as them. Hi, my name is Casey Knode and I live at 4472 Haymill Court. I'm here to give a public comment pertaining to the Everhome Suites conceptual review. My wife and I moved from southeast Fort Collins to Timneth last year. We have a seven-year-old son, and moving to Timneth coincided with the purchase of our first home. We had been looking for quite a while before we looked at the houses in the first development in Timneth Lakes. We quickly fell in love with the idea of owning a house in an area that we were told would become a large residential development with multiple trails and parks. We really wanted a neighborhood that we could foresee being able to take our son on bike rides and walks and enjoy communing with our neighbors. We know many of the amenities are still yet to come and that the area around will continue to be developed with more houses and some commercial development as well. However, it has recently come to our attention that a large hotel is in the very early conceptual stages with the proposed location to be at the intersection of Signal Tree Drive and Harmony. This sits directly next to our neighborhood and would, in my opinion, negatively affect the residential area nearby in many different ways. I'm not opposed to commercial development and would even welcome businesses that would be aimed at benefiting the citizens of the surrounding neighborhoods and the greater Timneth area. However, not only would a hotel not directly benefit the local community, it has the potential to drive away other businesses who would otherwise want to build there, like a childcare center. The safety concerns that would arise from a hotel for travelers coming off the interstate who have no vested interest in the local community would assuredly increase the potential for crime and pollution. I know that as Timneth grows, new development will be necessary. However, I wholeheartedly believe that a hotel so close to residential houses with children is not something that Timneth should be exploring and does not fit with the mixed-use zoning of the neighborhood. I know this is very early in the planning stages, as you said, but I ask that the council and staff do all they can to keep this hotel from becoming a reality. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That's all.
Consent agenda, any comments? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The consent agenda has passed unanimously. Reports, council?
Thank you, Mayor. I will not be able to attend our next council meeting on April 9th. I'm taking, my wife and I are taking our kids to see the eclipse and won't make it back in time for the meeting. So in light of that, I wanted to take the opportunity today, given that, Mayor, it'll be your last council meeting as well as yours, Mayor Pro Tem Hanson, and thank you both for your service to our community in this council. It's a job that can be thankless at times. We're all doing it on a volunteer basis, and I know both of you have put in just extensive time and energy into. time and energy into the work here for our community. And personally, you know, even before I ran for office, both of you have been very gracious with your time, always willing to share your thoughts and listen, and I just wanted to extend both of you my personal thanks for your service.
That's very kind of you. Thanks, Robert.
I had a couple items. First, I'll go ahead and add a comment about the hotel. As Robert noted, my term's ending, so I have some freedom to comment on it in ways that other council members do not. Normally, we need to confine our comments to certain forms of public hearing, but I will not be voting on it. One of the, the first I'd heard of it as well was an email from one of your neighbors that was sent to us a few days ago, and I went and asked a little bit, some questions myself of staff. The area of that particular hotel does sit in the Harmony corridor, which tends to have some little bit different zonings and some different zoning rules. But that said, I think every developed proposal I voted on, one of the legal criteria is how does this impact neighboring properties? I won't be voting on it, so take it for what it's worth, but I would not vote to approve a four-story commercial building that's in the backyard of single-family homes. And I won't speak for the rest of the council, but I, I believe that that would be a reasonable sentiment, so I'll go and share that. Second would be related to, there's a, there's a very active conversation in town right now going on related to our schools. There's some discussions about a lot of consolidating of schools, closing of schools, shifting of school boundaries, and it's a very active conversation within our community. So first off, I would urge members of our community to be aware of what's going on with those discussions. One of the ideas that was recently floated in the various scenarios they're looking at, and these are early scenarios, they're not at all set, would be a shifting of boundaries so that a significant number of Timnith residents would be transferred out of some Timnith schools, out of Bethke Elementary and down to Banford. One of the things I've seen about this in discussions, both people reaching out to me and online, is a pretty unanimous feeling from the community about how this would impact our town. And I think a service that we can do as a council would be to help give a, give an additional megaphone to those types of voices and those views to help make sure they're heard. And so it was my intent to work with, assuming the council is generally agreeable to the concept, to work with staff over the next two weeks to present a resolution to be presented at the next council meeting, simply urging PSD-defined solutions that conserve our neighborhoods, conserve Timnith kids going to Timnith schools. PSD is very actively seeking community feedback, so I think this would be within that spirit of what they're asking. It would be a collaborative in tone, so that is something that I would like to work with staff on over the next couple of weeks to present at our next council meeting.
Great.
Just a quick, Brett, since if that comes together, I wouldn't be here to vote on it next, next week. I'm very much supportive of, of what you're talking about. I've, I've heard the same feedback and, you know, think that a lot, a lot of people take great pride in, in our community and going to Timnith schools and, and if we can preserve that and, and our voice can help do that, I'd, I'd be supportive.
Thanks.
Being the mayor isn't always a bad job. Sometimes you get to do some really fun stuff, and one of the fun things that I got to do this past week was to read to the fifth and sixth graders in a program called Read Across America, where we read a book to the kids. And I'm going to just read a couple of these, and they're very fifth-grady-ish written. But, you know, "Dear Mayor, thank you for coming to Read Across America and reading to us. It was very fun." Or, now, this person knows really how to write. It's embarrassing for me. "Thank you for coming and reading to us, letting us read and letting us read." I let, I'd pass around the book, so I didn't just do the reading, I'd pass around the book, and the kids got a big kick out of that. "It was really kind of you to do that. Hope you'll see me aga, hope to see you again, Mayor." Thank you. I appreciate the time you took, relate to us and teach us about your job. Carolyn writes, "Hi, thank you for reading to us. I liked how you passed the book around and let everybody read. I thought it was fun-er that way," from Charlotte. And lastly, "Thank you for your time coming in, reading to our class. We loved the experience of meeting the mayor of Timnith, Hazel." So that was fun. Melissa, I'm going to give you these. Maybe we put some of them on the internet as notice and stuff. But it, it's a fun deal. The kids are great. We're, we're, anybody that has a child at, at Timnith Elementary, not to exclude anybody else, but Timnith Elementary, I was so impressed. They're very intelligent, they're very polite and very respectful of every, not only of me, but of all their classmates. Finance report, Lisa. Okay. Community development report, Scott Robinson.
I don't have anything to report other that was included.
Wasn't it? Great, thank you. Terry Jones, please.
Nothing further, Mayor.
Thanks, Terry. All right, headed into business, 6A. Ordinance number 10, Series 2024, and ordinance amending the town code to adopt procedures to allow the town to collect a convenience fee. Carolyn.
Thank you. This is the second reading of the ordinance that would allow the town to pass along the processing charges that are put in place by the companies that process credit card payments and other payments. Maybe it'd be an ACH payment or, you know, a direct deduction from a bank account or a credit card payment. And the town is changing the platforms that it's using. Typically, some of these fees were charged by a different payment portal and went to a state organization, and so this ordinance would allow the town to keep all of the impact fee or the parking rec fee or whatever thing you've imposed without having to deduct the credit card processing fee from the amount. So it allows the town to pass the exact amount that's being imposed by the credit card processing company to the residents as an add-on to the fee that the town has otherwise set.
Any questions or comments for Carolyn? Did you have one?
I do, but go, go ahead, Luke.
Okay, go ahead, Luke.
So as you go through this, Carolyn, what are some other payment options for our residents? So we can, if they want to avoid these fees, what, what are some other ways they can pay to avoid the 3%?
So a check would be the easiest one to come and drop off a check. I guess take cash? I guess depends how much money we're talking about.
Yeah.
Lisa can talk to that.
Yes, they could, they could still pay via check. The state payment portal is still available to them to make payments. They still get the fee charged there. They're accustomed to that when they make payments through there. That fee just goes to the state rather than us charging it.
And what would the shortfall be, Lisa, if we, or an estimated shortfall if we didn't charge these fees?
3% on revenue collected. So when we're talking about building permit fees, for example, that could be pretty significant. I haven't run the numbers across the board.
Thank you.
Robert?
Yeah, I guess, I, I think you answered it there, but essentially, the community would not be paying more if we passed this. It just allows us to use different payment processors.
Exactly.
Okay. And our neighboring communities, you know, are they doing the same thing or is, is anyone else kind of eating the fee?
Yes, it is typical, and I think we borrowed the language from a neighboring municipality.
Thank you.
There's also a state statute that specifically authorizes local government to collect the processing fee so that that's not deducted.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
Mayor, it is a public hearing.
We got a public hearing, I'm sorry? Public hearing.
I will open the public hearing at 6:23. No one is signed up to speak. I will close the public hearing at 6:23.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve ordinance number 10, Series 2024, and ordinance amending the town code to adopt procedures to allow the town to collect a convenience fee?
I move to approve ordinance number 10, Series 2024, and ordinance amending the town code to adopt procedures to allow the town to collect a convenience fee.
Do I have a second? Any discussion?
Let's provide a brief comment, which is, I think this is unfortunate from the community perspective, that the community has to pay these ridiculous fees. Credit card processors deserve to be paid, but what they get on these is absolutely ridiculous for the service that they provide. And while this isn't a Timnith issue, boy, I would sure love to see either state or federal regulators rein this in because it's, it's just gouging the community.
Any other comments? Ordinance number 10, Series 2024, and ordinance amending the town code to adopt procedures to allow the town to collect a convenience fee. Do I have a motion to approve? We got a motion, so all those in favor, the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. 6B, Resolution Number 28, Series 2024, a resolution authorizing budget expenditures for enterprise resource planning software. Lisa.
Thank you. We're really excited to bring this project forward. It's been in the works and been, we've been considering this for well over a year now. I'm just going to point out through a few slides and summarize some of the information in your packet. We've been with Casell since 2012. You can see the statistics there. In 2012, we had nine employees. Our budget was 2.6 million. Today, we're at 71 employees and our budget's 56 million. And then the change in population increased by approximately 10,000. So during that time, we've seen really minimal upgrades to Casell. We've encountered many workaround processes that we're currently dealing with for expenditure approvals and document management. We need broader functionality for tracking of expenditures via project, project accounting ledger for capital projects and development projects. And then there's new mandates and efficiencies that are coming down related to municipal court, where we have to provide virtual court services and so forth. We also need better internal controls and around secure employee and vendor information than what we currently have. When I counted up the number of years in local government on our finance team, it's well over 50 years, and each one of us has worked in various softwares through our career. Here's a list of some of the software that we've encountered and experienced, either in implementation or utilization. Casell, Oracle, Solomon, Workday, ADG, OpenGov, EnerGov, Tyler, Harris Workforce, and Enterprise and IFIS. The project team will be made up of a steering committee of the town manager, myself, and the town clerk. Our project manager will be Bonnie Detness, our accounting manager, and then we have functional leads for each area related to general ledger, project ledger, municipal court, procure to pay, payroll and payables, receivables, bank recs, human resources, and then our new IT position will be the technical lead on the project. As I stated, we've been considering this for well over a year. As we've implemented new modules in Casell, some of the functionality is still really lacking, and we're doing a lot of manual processes. So around April or May, we identified we're not going to continue with Excel. We really need to explore some different options. So independently, court and finance submitted budget proposals to implement new software to replace Casell. We went through various demonstrations on the court side, and Tyler came out on top. I surveyed various municipalities through a listserv. There was approximately 22 that responded, and the majority were either using Casell, Tyler, or ADG, which is what the town used prior to Casell. We requested demonstrations from two of those vendors, and only one responded. And we did reach out to the second one several times, and we just could not get a demonstration from them. So finance and human resources received onsite demonstrations from Tyler Technologies. We went through various iterations of question and answers, follow-up demonstrations, and contract quote negotiations between January and March. So what we're recommending is implementing Tyler ERP Pro. It will really enhance our functionality for online transaction approvals via workflows, enhance document management within the software, self-service portals to enhance internal controls and allow for stronger customer service. It's a cloud-based solution with strong mobile functionality, strong project accounting ledger to track capital, facilities, and development project costs, a really strong financial and statistical dashboard, ability to meet that mandate for virtual court, strong user guides and online support, strong integration between court, HR, and finance modules. And then in the future, should we choose to, they do have a building permit inspection module that we could implement that would integrate with the finance as well. The town will still utilize ClearGov software for its budget preparation, so budget prep will not be in Tyler. This is pretty common when you're looking at five-year projections. Building a budget is different than financial reporting, so we will utilize ClearGov for the budget prep, but it does integrate with Tyler. Our purchasing policy allows for cooperative price agreements or piggybacking on other governments, where bidding processes will qualify as meeting the requirements of a formal public bidding process. So we do this frequently for vehicles, for furniture, for other things. We piggyback on state contracts, cooperative agreements quite often. This Tyler is part of a cooperative agreement that was put out to bid by Sourcewell, and as a result, we can utilize an 11.5% discount rate on their services. I will note that in the RFP, there were 38 respondents and Tyler ranked to number one. The total cost for the project that we're asking for is $228,167,000. This includes software costs for nine months, for the remainder of the year, hardware purchases and implementation costs, and then $50,000 to backfill staffing during this implementation project. There's no increase in annual software costs through 2026, and then a 3% increase for '27 through '29. Any questions?
Go ahead, Luke. Snooze, you lose.
Lisa, I saw there's multiple different departments that all benefit from the software. If you could tell me which department do you think will benefit most and which department, I would ask, kind of in that same term, has the greatest need for this type of software upgrade?
Oh, I think it's a tie. I think finance, court, and HR continually have these manual processes and workarounds, so I think all three departments are going to equally benefit. I think departments themselves will realize the benefits in processing of invoices, electronic approvals, and so forth.
And, and in that, can you tell me more, a little bit more about court? I just, I don't, I don't know enough to, to ask the right questions about it. So can you tell me how court uses Casell and then how they would use the software?
Yeah, I'm going to let Lizzie speak to that, she's the expert.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Luke, for the question. I think I was waiting eagerly to answer that, prepared maybe a year, but, you know, the day came. We need to have a better tech to be able to fill out the information that we use. Like Lisa said, I've been doing it manually. I've been checking what is the detailed information that we could benefit using. that we could benefit using Tyler. And when they came and did their demonstration, I usually, to give you an example, if somebody gets a ticket and they need to come in court, I usually remind them the date of the court, when they're able to pay to not have to appear in court if that's not a summons, and how they can pay. With Tyler, I don't need to do that manually or call them or send letters. That's a service that we text them immediately. We all, we have all the information that has been already put in. Tyler, that's an automatic product, to mention one. Another thing that helps the court that since October last year, a House bill 23-112 for streaming online is required. So that's another very important issue that we will need to provide. And among others, if you have specific questions, I'll gladly answer.
So streaming online would be a compliance issue, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So far, we were giving time because not every court has the software. But we have until, well, until October this year, but it takes a while to implement the software.
Understood. Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Lisa, can you run me through the expenses for the runout of what you expect for Casell? And then how you're gonna implement the temporary staff to hopefully speed along that process to get us out of there?
In my projection, we have the full Casell cost for '24 and '25. I imagine '25 could be reduced a little bit, but it all depends on the phasing of the implementation. So we may go live with the general ledger financials, and then payroll may be phased in later. So that's why we'll have to pay for both of those softwares at once. And that's typical. You want to run duplicative processes in both systems to make sure it's working. And then we will have a legacy file of historical data from Casell that we'll be able to go back and utilize after we go live on Tyler. We will be converting the prior year and the current year financial data over, but everything else will be just a data file that we'll be accessing when we need to go back and look at historical records.
Thank you, Lisa. Sorry, one more question.
Okay.
Do you anticipate any contract problems with Casell to get out of it?
I don't.
Perfect. Thank you.
Robert? The $50,000 request for implementation assistance. I'm glad you clarified that today because originally, I've been involved in project implementations, and we've actually paid someone to like, implement the project. But that's not the intent here. The intent is to have staff implement and then backfill the staff duties, right?
Yes, that's correct. So we would probably hire temporary staff to handle a lot of the day-to-day operations so our staff can really learn the system, be involved in the setup and so forth. So it's mainly to avoid that burnout factor so they're not doing their daily tasks and working on this project.
Okay. And those temporary staff, would that be through existing agreements? Or is that something else we need to go out and get?
Typically, it would be through a staffing agency. That's what we've used in the past. Robert Haff, and then there's a few others that we could contact for accounting-specific support or administrative support.
So that's primarily the need is accounting versus we're backfilling planners or something like that that are working to implement?
Primarily accounting and potentially court and potentially HR. So once we get more into the estimated number of hours for each field, we'll kind of see how that 50,000 needs to be allocated.
And then I noted in the paperwork that there's a number of their modules that we don't intend to use. Has the price we're paying been adjusted for us not using those? Or are we paying full freight?
No, it's been adjusted. So they're listed as optional. Fixed assets is one that we're not sure we want to implement yet. So we may implement that down the road. The ACFER, which is the annual financial report, they have a building tool in there. We're not sure whether we want to utilize that either, but it's not reflected in the pricing.
And then, we actually did run an RFP on this, correct?
We did not, but it has been competitively bid through Sourcewell.
Okay, so Sourcewell ran an RFP. They got 38 respondents.
Exactly. Yep.
All right, thank you.
I'm gonna segue into Robert's question. So could, who's running the screen?
Oh, sorry.
Is that you, Chad? Could you shoot me back two slides? So who's Sourcewell?
Sourcewell is a, it's a local cooperative agreement. So they take local government cooperative bids and competitively bid RFPs, and then they allow other municipalities, other local governments, school districts, to go on and register. And if they're a member, they get to piggyback off of that pricing.
Okay, so Sourcewell's located where?
In Minnesota, I believe.
Okay. And so they do a bid process in the state of Colorado?
They do it nationwide for a lot of things. Our furniture that we purchased for the PD building, for example, was through Sourcewell as well. So we've utilized them in the past.
Okay. Okay. So why don't you sort of explain why you'd made the determination not to do an RFP? Now, I agree that you've said that the Sourcewell process is similar to, if not exact, an RFP. But why don't you explain that a little more?
Sure. I felt like we would end up with the same result. I feel like we would get Tyler as the number one choice. I think we would have limited options in response to our RFPs, given that we asked for demonstrations from two others and they wouldn't. The other software that's out there also is relatively large. So like Oracle and IFIS, they're really, really big shops, and those are really, really pricey. So I don't think that they would submit, nor do I think we would consider them.
Why, why wouldn't the other two do a demonstration? I would think that'd be their SOP.
I have no idea, but we did reach out multiple times.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I'll make a quick comment. I appreciate the really thorough explanation of the whole process, the collective experience. And I appreciate running through the efficiency of the Sourcewell RFP process and getting us a discount on the Tyler services. And I'll note that, you know, this was a budgeted expense, and the proposal here is well under budget. So I thank you for getting this done under the budget that we'd approved.
Ditto. Anybody else? Okay. We don't, we don't have, we don't have to do a public here, okay? So I've got resolutions 28, series 2024, a resolution authorizing budget expenditure for the enterprise resource planning software. Do I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve resolution number 28, series 2024, a resolution authorizing budget expenditures for enterprise resource planning software.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor of resolution number 28, series 2024, a resolution authorizing budget expenditures for enterprise resource planning software, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution number 28 passed unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Resolution number 29, series 2024, a motion for reconsideration of annexation of Connell Annexation Number Three. Carolyn?
Thank you. So the town council has previously approved annexation of property into the boundaries of the town pursuant to resolution number seven, series 2024, which was adopted on February 13, 2024. And the town has now received a motion for reconsideration of annexation of the property. And that property was referred to in the ordinance as Connell Annexation Number Three. The motion for reconsideration was submitted by three individuals. Terra Resource Corporation, Timneth Lands LLC, and Craig Harrison collectively submitted the motion for reconsideration through their attorney. It was submitted on February 21, 2024, which was within 10 days of the town's action to approve the annexation. This was placed on this agenda because they weren't quick, it wasn't submitted with enough time to put on the first meeting of, after it was submitted, which would be the second meeting of February. And then due to scheduling of the individuals asking for the reconsideration, we have placed it on tonight's agenda. This is not a public hearing, but we do have before us two individuals that are going to speak. The first one is the attorney for the individuals who moved for the reconsideration. And they may also have their surveyor here as well. And then secondly, the original petitioners for annexation also have representatives here that are gonna speak on this issue. The motion for reconsideration was submitted pursuant to the Municipal Annexation Act 3112116 to A2. And it is a prerequisite before there can be judicial review of the annexation. And the motion for reconsideration provides the town council with the opportunity to either amend or rescind the ordinance by which you approved the original annexation. Under the town's Home Rule Charter, if you want to amend or rescind your ordinance, you need to do that by another ordinance. So the action that we're gonna be asking you to take would be either to deny the motion for reconsideration, which holds your current decision so that the annexation continues in effect without modification. Or you can direct staff that you'd like us to bring an ordinance back to you to either amend or rescind that original approval of the annexation. And then that would be brought forward at the next council meeting. Annexation is a legislative act. So reconsideration of annexation is also a legislative act in the discretion of the town council. The basis for the request for reconsideration as the responders, as the requesters are going to present is based on an argument that the town aired in finding that the correct petitioners signed the petition for annexation. The petition for annexation was signed by Connell LLC and only Connell LLC. And the conclusion of the town engineers in reviewing the petition for annexation was that that was proper because all of the land was either within the boundary, it was either owned by Connell LLC or was within a street or road right-of-way. And that is the issue that's being contested by the individuals who are asking for your reconsideration. And they also objected to the fact that they only had three minutes to present their presentation at the original annexation hearing, which is consistent with the town's practice that it allows any individuals who are providing public comment in a public hearing or public comment setting to have three minutes. And you will remember that they also had the opportunity to present information that was in your packet. So I feel that they were provided with a voice and an opportunity to speak at that meeting on the original annexation. And at this point, I'd like to answer any questions you have. Also, the town engineers are available to answer any questions. And then if there are none, we're going to move to the presentation by the attorney, Patrick Groom, for those three individuals who asked for the reconsideration.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Patrick Groom. And on behalf of my clients, Terra Resource Corporation, Timneth Lands LLC, and Craig Harrison, we thank you for affording us the opportunity to present our position regarding the motion for reconsideration. As council is aware, my clients believe that their property is being unlawfully annexed because they have not approved the annexation and signed the annexation petition. Although we raise arguments concerning the entire length of what's identified as County Road 5 right-of-way, we will focus tonight on what we identify as segments one and two in the materials we've submitted to council. It's undisputed that that Timneth and Terra own the fee underneath a portion of what is identified as County Road 5 right-of-way within segments one and two. The question is whether the land they own within the annexation area is entirely within the right-of-way. It's important for you to note that the burden of proof on establishing the right-of-way is on the applicant, not on the landowner who's being unlawfully annexed. If the applicant has included any area, no matter how small, within the right-of-way that is not actually within the right-of-way, the petition does not comply with Colorado law and should have been denied. Connell claims that Terra and Timneth's argument fails with respect to segments one and two because, quote, "their various rights-of-way for County Road 5 along its course, both dedicated and prescriptive." That's not entirely true. There is no dedicated right-of-way within segment two at all. And it's entirely unclear what Connell believes constitutes a prescriptive easement in this area. Connell's statement gets to the heart of the matter. What did the 1903 Road Viewers Report actually declare to be right-of-way? To claim that the Road Viewers Report specifies that the right-of-way is 60 feet directly east of the section line is without foundation. The Road Viewers Report is not a dedication of right-of-way. It's simply a recommendation to the county commissioners of where to build the road. The county commissioners then either accept or deny the recommendation. The problem Connell has is that we don't know what the recommendation was for the right-of-way that was adopted by the commissioners. The Road Viewers Report states that the road will be built in the most practicable location and in the most practicable direction. The actual location of the road was depicted on a map attached to the Road Viewers Report. However, neither Galloway nor Connell can produce a copy of the map prepared by the Road Viewers. The Road Viewers Report further states that they marked the road by setting stakes. Carolyn White stated in her February 6, 2024 submittal to town council that it's difficult to determine the exact location of County Road 5 in 1903 without knowing where those stakes were set or where the road was actually built. She further states, "The Road Viewers Report also notes that the Road Viewers made changes to the route requested in the citizen's petition in order to find the most practicable route, again making it difficult to determine the exact route state by the Road Viewers," end quote. That's exactly our point. It's an unreliable document because it's not a complete document. And you can't rely on that to establish the right-of-way. I'll turn the podium over to Michael Lang, who's our surveyor, to address the surveying issues.
Mayor, council? I'm Michael Lang with Ridge Tech Engineering. And the board has asked us to review this annexation with the ownership. Can we bring up exhibit C and D? We'd ask to have those. Let's, let's move to exhibit D. I think we'll, since we're kind of both up there. Currently, the areas shown in yellow are owned by Timneth Lands and Terra Resources, respectively. This is clearly evident by the deeds and has not been disputed by anyone. Neither of these entities were recognized as landowners in the annexation. The annexation shows the entire area as road right-of-way, but that is incorrect. No part of County Road 5 on the highlighted property, there is no part of County Road 5 on the highlighted property. And there's no evidence that it's ever been on that property. I concurred with the surveyor, Reed Rosellas, that did the annexation, that the historic right-of-way in place for County Road 5 that has a 60-foot right-of-way width. This right-of-way abuts the yellow highlighted area on the east side as shown in both the exhibits C and D. The historic alignment for County Road 5 has always been within that 60-foot roadway. And it still is today. I also agreed with Reed Rosellas when he stated in his affidavit that with the assistance of two of the right-of-way agents from Laramie County, they were unable to produce any documents that they were unable to produce any documents that dedicated the area in question as right-of-way. Reed also mentioned in his affidavit that he solicited advice from Laramie County's senior surveyor, Ron Perkins. I also contacted Ron to discuss the best practices for surveying in this case. Ron and Reed are associates at the PLSC and know each other very well, but Ron could not recall having a conversation with Reed in any details regarding County Road 5 or any conflicted right-of-way for this area. I did share with Ron the details of this case so that he could offer a more informed opinion. Ultimately, Mr. Perkins agreed with me that the only defendable right-of-way for County Road 5 in this area would be the 60 feet that is the existing road right-of-way, and that it has been occupied exclusively since the road was built in 1903. I also asked Ron if he could point to any other location in Laramie County where a Road Viewers Report defined right-of-way in the manner that Reed Rosales suggested in this annexation. He said that he was not aware of any case that would be consistent with that application and that using the Road Viewers Report in that fashion was not correct. That is consistent with my opinion, and I think it speaks to the mistake of this annexation. In the early 1900s, landowners would come together and formally petition the county to build and maintain a road in service to a specific area. The county commissioners would hear the petition and vote on it. If sustained, the commissioners empowered the Road Viewer with the task of field research to develop the proposed alignment. The Road Viewer would return the report to the commissioners, and they would vote to adopt the report's recommendations. While the Road Viewer's Reports uses meets and bounds to describe the recommended road alignment, it's critical to acknowledge that the Road Viewer's Report also includes the phrase "or where practicable." This is the Road Viewer pointing out that during construction, the alignment likely will deviate from the proposed meets and bounds that he suggested in order to work with natural conditions that would challenge construction or make maintenance more difficult in the future. The county would then task someone with road construction. While building the road, the proposed alignment would generally be followed, but deviate for practical reasons. Wet or boggy areas, for example, rocky conditions, or physical features like the Pouda River. Once the road was completed, the commissioners, like they did in this case, would dedicate the road to the public, and the right-of-way would attach to the alignment as it was constructed in the practicable, practicable location. The Road Viewer's Report is just one document in that chain of actions authorized by the authority of the county commissioners. That has a clear purpose and intent. That purpose was to build County Road 5 for the public travel. And consistent with any other road of that time or since, a 60-foot easement was burdened upon the landowner for the use of the public. For anyone to suggest that in 1903, the county seized a right-of-way easement nearly 120 feet in width and only in this small area and nowhere else along the alignment, and that that area has never been used by the county, has never been improved or occupied by the county over the following 120 years, that just makes this simply incorrect. To suggest otherwise is unsubstantiated by the evidence or the facts. County Road 5 has a 60-foot right-of-way.
Would you wrap up?
Right now. County Road 5 has a 60-foot right-of-way that is located where the road has always been. And the highlighted area that was included in the annexation are privately owned and are not burdened with a road right-of-way. Thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn, would you like to say anything?
Mayor and Council, if I may, I'd like to ask our surveyor to speak first, and then I will follow. And I had understood that we were asked five minutes each, no more.
Correct.
Very good. So first, I'd like to introduce Reed Rosales, the surveyor from Galloway, who performed the survey associated with the annexation to respond to some of the technical comments made just now by Mr. Lang.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Could I please have the two exhibits back up? Specifically, exhibit C, please. I wanted to start with this slide because this shows a good representation of the methodology and research that I did to come up with the ultimate right-of-way. As Mr. Lang points out, we both agree on the prescriptive right-of-way centered on the road, 30 feet on each side. In my research, I utilized to the north the Riverbend Annexation and a Riverbend subdivision, which included the 60-foot right-of-way that we were discussing earlier. In fact, the additional right-of-way dedicated at reception number 97075700, as illustrated on this exhibit, has secondary calls within the legal description that states along the easterly right-of-way of County Road 5, which is 60 feet east of the section line. That was part of the Riverbend Annexation. And it was also part of a dedication that Dale Greer did, who was the head surveyor at the time with Laramie County. With response to the conversation I had with Ron Perkins, that was specifically for the 60-foot right-of-way that would be prescriptive centered on the existing road. So in short, everything that I've done to establish the 96.7 feet would have been the the contiguity that was already annexed into Timneth. So in essence, Timneth already annexed a 60-foot wide right-of-way just like we proposed on our annexation. I could leave a little bit of my presentation if there was any questions.
Okay. Carolyn?
Now, if I could have the PowerPoint, please. Thank you very much. All right. Thank you, Mayor, Council. I won't reintroduce ourselves, especially since Reed Rosales has already spoken to you in response to the other surveyor. We're here, as you know, tonight rehashing the same issues that were discussed and decided on the February 13 Town Council meeting in which you approved unanimously the Connell Annexation Number 3. And we respectfully provide this brief presentation tonight to respond to the arguments that have been raised by Mr. Groom asking you to reconsider that decision. I'll mention that you do have a letter from us in your packet, along with several exhibits, that explains in much more detail than I could in five minutes what our response to those arguments are. But I am going to briefly try to highlight some of the main points that we wanted to remind you of that are contained in that letter. Our responses can be summed up really in just one point. The three parties represented by Mr. Groom all claim that they own property within the annexed area that is not right-of-way. And I think we do not disagree. We are in unanimous agreement that if there's right-of-way on it, it doesn't count, and their signature's not required. If there's not right-of-way on it, then they've got a reason to talk. We think that there is no property that was annexed within the annexation that is either not owned by Connell or that has right-of-way on it. And therefore, their signature never was required. It was not sought or obtained, and it is not required. And also that that means that they do not have standing to bring this motion for reconsideration because the statute provides that a property owner other than an owner of right-of-way, who objects to an annexation and who didn't sign the petition, can bring the motion for reconsideration. And none of the property that is owned by any of those three parties fits that description. We've sort of already talked about that. Both claims are relevant because 100% of the land contained within the annexation is either right-of-way or owned by Connell, period. The fourth, fifth, and sixth arguments are all based on a factually inaccurate presumption regarding the existence of rights-of-way at the north end of the annexation. You heard some of the arguing about the 96-foot right-of-way, the 60-foot right-of-way. I think the main takeaway here is that all of the sources that were consulted, all of which are appropriate methodology for a surveyor to consult, and there are multiple sources, indicated that there are both dedicated and prescriptive rights-of-way encompassing the entire length of County Road 5 as it was mapped in the Connell Annexation. Thus, it does not include any portions of land that are owned by anyone other than Connell that are not also right-of-way. The three portions of right-of-way that were referenced by Mr. Rosales are highlighted here on this drawing, and we can come back to it to discuss it further, if you would like. There was also an argument raised that there was an improper reference to certain other maps and plats, and Mr. Rosales just spoke to that a moment ago. What he's talking about here is that he looked at the immediately adjacent property, the plat for that immediately adjacent property, which, by the way, was submitted and processed by some of the same folks that are proposing the motion for reconsideration right now, and matched up the lines of where the right-of-way would be. Surely, it was not intended that the 60-foot right-of-way ended and then jogged straight over to a different location, one way or the other, and then continued. And that is why those plots were referenced. It is not improper to reference them. And in fact, their legal descriptions contain some relevant information, as was just provided by Mr. Rosales. There was some accusation that the town was, you know, claiming that there was an adverse possession issue here. I think that's sort of irrelevant here. Terra's real claim is that, hey, these County Road 5 rights-of-way never existed in the location shown on the annexation map, and that is simply not true. Overwhelming evidence exists that the rights-of-way exist at the locations that were described in the annexation petition. And then I think the final argument has already been dealt with, and that is an allegation that for some reason, if the proponents of the motion for reconsideration weren't given more than three minutes, that there was some due process violation. And as this town well knows, and as your town attorney has advised you on numerous occasions, the town has the right to limit the time, place, and manner, just like you're time-limiting us today for public comment in these instances. Thus, Terra's assertions about owning property within the annexation boundaries that is not covered by established rights-of-way are erroneous and not based in fact or law. We respectfully request that you affirm your unanimous approval of the annexation so that the Ladera Project can proceed to be implemented to deliver the goods and services that the town and the residents need and want. We're available for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Anybody? Okay. Carolyn, could you give me what the motion would be if we decided to support our previous position?
Actually, Mayor, I'm sorry. I do have some questions.
Pardon?
I do have a couple of questions on.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah.
So there is a proposed resolution in your packet. That is Resolution Number 29, Series 2024, which would deny the request for reconsideration. So the actions that would be.
What page is it on?
That's on page 200. So the actions that are before the town council would be to approve that resolution, denying the request for reconsideration, or to make a determination that you'd like to have the staff bring an ordinance back to you that would either amend or rescind the annexations.
Robert? Thank you. I just have a couple of questions. First one's for Mr. Groom. There exists a section line that runs north and south. And as I understand it, the property that is on the west side of that section line is undisputed Connell property. And the property that is to the east of that section line is undisputed your client's property. Is that correct?
That's correct, to a certain point to the east. Obviously, my client's interest terminates, and there's another property owner further east.
Okay. And that your assertion is there exists a right-of-way that is essentially east of that section line, and that right-of-way strays far enough east that there is a gap between that right-of-way and the section line.
That's correct, and that gap is depicted on exhibit C and D, which were presented tonight.
So my question is, assuming that there exists that section of line that is between the right-of-way and the section line, can you point to any specific historical instances where any of your clients took action in terms of maintenance, in terms of shooing away trespassers, in terms of posting signs? Anything historically where your client has, you know, laid claim to that?
I haven't discussed in detail on these parcels what my client has done. I know that Mr. Harrison has posted no trespass signs on his property. Whether any was posted specifically in that highlighted area, I can't tell you. I do know they've maintained that. They've mowed the grass, complied with town ordinances with respect to the maintenance of that, or I should say county ordinances, with respect to the maintenance of that property. They've treated it like their own, and they believe, and they do own it. They are the record fee owners. I don't think there's any dispute about that. The only question is, is there a right-of-way burdening that property? And I think the answer to that is no. There aren't two right-of-ways out there. What Mr. Rosales calls a prescriptive easement is not a prescriptive easement. The road is where the county commissioners authorized the road in 1903. The applicant has never presented any evidence to dispute that. That's the only road that's been out there, and the only authorization for that road was the 1903 Viewer's Report. To claim that there's somehow 60 feet adjacent to the section line is just not supported by the record.
Good. I just want to make sure I'm clear on your assertion. Your assertion is that your clients have maintained property essentially west of current County Road 5?
That's correct.
Okay. But that you don't have a specific example, other than generally they've posted no trespass signs on their property?
And I'm not aware of any notice of violation issued by the county for failure to maintain that. And I think that would support a claim that they haven't been maintaining it, but they have been.
Okay. Thank you. And then perhaps Mr. Reed would be good to answer this one. But there exists today a road, County Road 5, correct?
Yes.
And that road is east of the section line. At least its center line is east of that section line, correct?
Yes.
And the parties don't dispute the location of the center line as it progresses through segments one and two?
Yes.
What is the distance between that center line of current County Road 5 and the section line?
You're taxing my memory here, but I'm going to do my best. It's approximately, it's about 47 feet to the shoulder of the road. And I'm not, off the top of my head, going to be able to tell you what it is from the shoulder to the center line. I'd only be guessing, but I'd say around 12 feet.
So the shoulder is still east of the section line, correct?
Yes.
And so as we talk about how wide that roadway is, how wide that easement is, how wide does it need to be to come over to the section line?
If I'm understanding your question, at that point where we saw on the exhibit, the shoulder, it's 47 feet, it would need to come over approximately 20, 24 feet?
So a 30-foot from center line easement doesn't get it, but a, what distance does?
Not, would you please repeat the question?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm not being articulate there.
That's all right.
And I guess we're saying that roadway easement there is something greater than 30 feet and something less than or equal to 96 feet. Is that the?
Well, the 96 comes from the contiguity to the north. To the north, they used the 60 feet. But they also did additional right-of-way to the east of that 60 feet. That's what made up the.
So instead of 60, they did 96?
Well, in total, with all of the dedications, as well as the 60 feet east of the section line, it came out to 96 feet. And that was on the exhibit, that was the different dedications that you saw. One of the dedications was from Laramie County, and it, if you looked on that, there was a little umbilical cord that kind of came to the south.
a little umbilical cord that kind of came to the south to kind of, to fill in a gap between the 60-feet right of way and the right of way that was dedicated on a deed that was 30 feet west of a property. So, it created a gap. The county came in, I'm assuming, to kind of fill that gap in, and that's what created the 96.79 feet. And it's not consistent as it goes south. It varies. It's not 96.79 or 97 feet, the entirety of that road.
Okay. So, you would agree that if the right of way were only a total of 60 feet wide, 30 feet of each side of the center line, it would not reach the section line? But that if we assume that right of way is 96 feet, then it does reach it. Is that the...
Well, the 96 feet is the 60 feet, 30 feet on each side of the center line, plus the 60 feet, which is 60 feet east of the section line. And so, I mean, there has been instances where there's two right of ways. Plenty of times in Weld County, you have 30 feet on each side of the section line, and if the road varies off, the county still maintains the 30 feet on each side of the center line of the road, the existing road, but they still maintain the 60 feet centered on the section line. So, to say that two right of ways can exist at the same time, that's not my experience. I've seen it plenty of times.
Thanks. Eric, can you offer any insight into the thought process on this?
I can, Robert. I think a big chunk of it falls down to where is that 60-foot historic right of way? And even though it has been mentioned, that is not mentioned anywhere else in the record, it actually is, in clarification, we believe was provided, and it's in the documents that Reed provided that all of our staff reviewed. Do you have Exhibit C? Knowing this area would be a point of question, I marked up the exhibit that Mr. Lang provided to show where we feel the documents are that created, that Reed feels created this 96 feet. The first piece is obviously the historic right of way. Where does that fall? And that's what in here I've hatched as red. It's the western portion. It overlaps the yellow. In 1903, the documents, the road reviewers' report and the road petitions state that the property owners were going to donate to the county a strip that was 60 feet wide for purposes of a county road. The document goes on and does have meet, or bearings and distances to describe the center line of said road, which in this area, the center line is 30 feet east of the section line, which creates what we believe was the historic right of way against the section line. That 60-foot swath is documented in a 1986 recorded document by a surveyor, Franklin Blake. In 1996, it's in a recorded document by Dale Greer with Laramo County Surveying. And in that document, as Reed says, that document is the blue wedge. That was the right of way that he obtained in 96. It was recorded in 97. In the legal description for that blue wedge, it describes the west edge of that blue as being along the east edge of the existing county right of way, which is 60 feet east of and parallel to the section line. Seems to concur with the 1903 position. And then it's also in the 2008 Riverbend plat, establishes it as being a 60-foot line along the section line. So, that's the red hatch, the blue hatch in 97, and then the green is on a deed for the property, and the property is described as additional right of ways, and a 30-feet additional right of way on the west part of the parcel that's labeled as Salisbury. So, that isn't part of the 60-foot historic. That's 30 feet of additional right of way dedication that the county asked for when that property was platted. So, that's where the 96 comes from, the 60 historic, the 30 from Salisbury's parcel, and then the wedge in between that varies from 9 to 15 feet. And that's what matches up with what Reed was trying to describe on Riverbend plat. The piece on the Riverbend plat is the 60-foot historic, and that blue, I didn't hatch it, but it's the wedge that continues up to the north. It widens out at the property line and then tapers back down to Harmony. And so, that's where those distances come into play.
And then you mentioned it, I mean, historically, I understand this doesn't always have to occur, but when you can dedicate right of way and reference a section line, that practically makes sense, right?
It's my understanding, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Brett?
Lisa?
All right. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution Denying Request for Reconsideration of Ordinance Number 7, Series 2024, approving the Connell Annexation Number 3?
I move to approve the resolution denying the motion for reconsideration of annexation of Connell Annexation Number 3.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I'll just add that, you know, I think at our initial hearing, we did consider all these materials. Both parties submitted significant written materials. I know we all looked through those in detail. I've reviewed everything that's come in today, and it's largely a repeat of what the council already considered. We heard some discussion this evening, which I think flushed out and further clarified essentially the points that were already made in the materials. And, you know, while there are varying opinions here, I do think if we look at, you know, the experts that we've heard from today, the majority opinion is that the landing question is part of the right of way, and that that right of way is both a historic right of way and a prescriptive right of way. I'll note that it makes sense that that right of way would run up to and include the section line, and in looking at some of the recent filings, that does seem to be consistent with what happens there. So, I believe that the council got this right the first time. I think we've given both sides plenty of time today. I think we've thoroughly considered it, and I would support the motion to deny the request for reconsideration.
Brett? I'll add a couple of comments. I know we have an intergovernmental agreement with the county and a legal requirement that when we annex land, we are also required to annex the accompanying right of way. And I think if the town had an option, or if Connell had an option of being able to get this annexation through without a legal argument or standoff of some kind, I think we would do it, but we are required to annex what we're told is the right of way. So, I don't see a legal avenue for us to really do this annexation in the way that Mr. Harrison and his various entities would have us do. I guess I will address slightly the argument that we didn't get a chance to hear Mr. Harrison's arguments. You know, in that spirit, we have been hearing from Mr. Harrison on this for more than just today, and more than just the right of way arguments. In the December meeting, Town Council, Mr. Harrison sent a letter that was read into the public record, in which he argued that there should be no commercial or residential development allowed at the Ladera site. And there were various assertions about the technicalities of the mining permits on the land, which were later refuted in our public meetings. Mr. Harrison argued that there should be delays, or the annexation should be put off because people simply didn't know about Ladera, an odd assertion considering the dozens of news stories and town updates, and many, many individuals that have come in to comment on it over nearly two and a half years now. Mr. Harrison argued that we couldn't be sure that the signatures on the Connell Annexation petition were really belonging to the individuals wanting to annex because they were only 12 days old. And I bring this up because I think it's worth pointing out that there's a pattern of arguments, a tactic, that's throw however many arguments you can against the wall and see what you can get to stick in order to delay and prevent a competitive, business competitor from being able to develop on land. I would not support any government action that is meant to benefit one to the developer at the expense of another. And so, for that reason, I will be supportive of denying this resolution to reconsider.
Luke?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that I, you know, after reviewing tonight's packet and our previous packet, I didn't find to agree with Robert any additional evidence that really alters my initial conclusion regarding the annexation. The staff review, the attorney's review, and Mr. Rosales' land survey review indicate that more than 50% of the property's owners signed in favor of the annexation. This really, to me, confirms the requirements that have been met. So, based on that requirement, I'm going to be voting to deny the request for reconsideration.
Did you have more? Okay. All right. Do I have a motion to, wait, we had questions.
We've moved. We're ready to go.
We do have a motion, that's right. So, all those in favor of a resolution denying request for reconsideration of Ordinance Number 7, Series 2024, approving Connell Annexation Number 3, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The resolution passes unanimously. Discussion Number 7. Matt?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'll try to make this brief. We have a pretty extensive packet for you on this item. So, I do want to hit the highlights, though. It is, we've been approached by an individual in town that had a disaster fire at their home, damaged, destroyed, majority of it, and they needed to do significant repairs on their home. And they came to a meeting and requested some relief from the council, got a little bit of feedback from some council members, and said, hey, let's look at some kind of policy to offer up some level of relief to situations like this, not on an individual, like a specific person, but like put a policy together that could be used for others that might have a similar situation happen. So, we tried to do a policy that gave the option, the town manager and staff, a little bit of discretion, and then if that discretion was, we said no to something, or if it got challenged, it could go to council, and council could actually weigh in on it, but it would be left to staff. The area we focused on was the use tax as a relief. It's something that wouldn't necessarily be seen as revenue to the town because it's, you know, if it's a disaster, it's a replacement, it's not revenue that's projected with a new building, it's a reconstruction. So, it's really not revenue that is looked at as projections. So, for those reasons, we said use tax sounds like the right place to go, within reason, too. So, up to $10,000, which, depending on the level of severity of the claim, in this case, this particular incident had a use tax amount of about $13,000. So, it wouldn't get all of it, but it would be about, you know, 90-some, 90% of it or thereabouts. So, we've, we looked at that space, and then if it was a smaller incident, something that happened, we could waive the full amount and provide a little bit of relief for individuals that are having some kind of issue. One of the things we wanted to make sure, though, is that it wasn't like negligence or some other reason for the disaster. So, we relied on the insurance function as a legitimizer, so to speak. So, if insurance is actually kicking in, that means that the claim was a legitimate claim through insurance. Therefore, we felt like staff would have an opportunity to say, okay, that, that claim would be a legitimate reason to actually kick in a little bit to help people on this relief for the disaster that happened. We don't suspect that this is going to be, and we hope not, really, that this is a very prevalent thing. We've had one now. I know that the town is growing, and we're adding additional homes, and there are opportunities, more growing opportunities where this could come about. But we think that it's probably focused, you know, a very narrow focus. The other thing we didn't want to do is do it on a community-wide perspective, because those might be wanted to look at by council in a separate light. So, if there was a hailstorm, or a heaven forbid tornado, or a fire, or something like that, that affected multiple property owners, the council may want to say, well, let's, let's take a better, more holistic look at this and not do it on a one-by-one basis. For those reasons, that's why we went down this path of this narrow, individual focus, use tax only, and having some kind of checkbox that says this is the reason why we would allow it. So, open to questions. It's more of a conversation. If there are people, if you have feedback or questions for us, Scott and Logan are both here, too, and we can, we can try to answer any questions that you might have.
Luke?
Matt, can you, so you just stated it. It says the policy is intent not to cover community-wide disaster events. So, who is defining community-wide disaster events?
So, it's almost, look at it a little differently. We're looking at it individual homes. So, if it's an individual property, that meets it. If it's multiple properties, we would not look at it. If it was two, three, four, you know, it starts to expand, it, then it, from our perspective, we're looking at it one by one. And so, if it gets larger than a few, we're probably going to put it in this community-wide perspective potential. Like a hailstorm is a perfect example. It's probably going to affect more than just one, two, or three. It's going to affect a whole block or, you know, 20 to 30 homes kind of a thing. And that would be more of this community-wide perspective in our, from our viewpoint, and we would kick it up to the council, maybe, to say, hey, is this something that you want to get involved in at that point?
And you kind of touched on this. So, my concern out of this is roofs, you know, just, I've heard different things, but, you know, everybody in Colorado has a new roof every 10 years. So, does this give you any concern? I know we talked about community-wide, but it feels like everybody replaces the roof all the time, and I'm not sure I want that to be on the town by any means. So, it doesn't give you any concern or...
Well, you wouldn't consider a roof if, usually, it's going to be like a hailstorm, and that would be covered probably a different way from insurance perspective, and it would be a broader thing. So, you have a whole block or two blocks or something. We would, we would say, no, this is, this is not for that. But if somebody's tree fell on the roof and the neighbors or whatever, then, then we could look at replacement or this credit in terms of a use tax relief. So, it wouldn't be that, you know, block-wide or multiple-home-wide roof replacements. So, if somebody came in one at a time, or like, look, this is hailstorm damage, was it, I mean, unless there's a little cloud over your house, and you got it only, your only house, the only one, so, which can happen, but we wouldn't be looking at that kind of a detail.
Okay. And I guess I just want to know, maybe, Lisa, you can answer this question of what valuation are we looking at and how that'd be calculated for the use tax? What number would be looking at in this total property damage?
So, the way the use tax is calculated, it's 3% on 50% of the estimated building costs. So, the $10,000 would cover $666,666,666 in construction costs would be the $10,000.
And you feel that that's an appropriate number for what you see? Or maybe that's a question for you, Matt, is, I know you guys said 10,000, but, you know, I said the one's 13,000 and this one's 10, so you feel... you know, I said the one's 13,000 and this one's 10. So you feel like that's a pretty appropriate number for what we're seeing?
I think based on the average home price in Timneth, around 150, you take into account the land evaluation, I think that's adequate based on that.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Yep.
I'm gonna go ahead and go shoot. So it looks like to me that you're setting up the opportunity for a double dip. You were asked, and maybe I misunderstood or heard, that on how would you know what was appropriate, how that the person that had the casualty was actually something that was a casualty, and your response was, we'll look to the insurance company who's going to be there to pay it off. Well, aren't you, aren't we double dipping then? So if they're going to get paid by the insurance company, then why are we coming in and paying the use tax?
Yeah, we, we talked a lot about the insurance, and certainly the insurance is going to cover the things that they cover. And maybe they, maybe they'll cover the permit cost, maybe not. Maybe they'll cover up to some diminished, you know, depreciated value of things. And a home, complete home reconstruction, they're probably going to be short on whatever the amount is. And so this 10,000 was a pretty small portion of a much bigger thing. So we, we felt like it was, and it was a goodwill measure, too, from the town's perspective, to help out a little bit. So that was, that's why we thought it was not like we're not doing the same thing insurance is doing. We're helping maybe cover some of the costs they might not be able to cover.
But so that gets back to my question. If the insurance company isn't covering it, then they must not feel it's a casualty, which at that point.
They might not cover all of it, is my point. So the insurance company may cover the replacement value of the, a window that was twenty-year-old window or ten-year-old window. And so there's a difference from what that window to the today's window is. And so there is, there are differences in what you will get from insurance that might not cover all the costs that you have. So it's hedging that a little bit.
I guess I'll mention for the, let me reiterate this for the public's benefit. You know, I think the, the genesis of this idea was an individual whose home burned down, an individual who had already paid all the taxes and they were needing to rebuild it, and is the town going to use that as a source of revenue? To collect more taxes from someone who is rebuilding their home? Personally, I don't feel good about using that as an opportunity to collect revenue for the town, for a home that's already paid the taxes. So I think I, I, I do like the idea. I guess I'll ask a dumb question first. You know, I've, I've been fortunate not to have a roof replaced. If I were to have extensive hail damage on my roof and have to do significant repairs, am I generally owing use tax to the town for that, or?
Yeah, you'd pay, yeah, you'd pay the use tax.
Okay. I, I had experience with that, fortunately. So I just wanted to make sure I understood that. One question I'd have is, how are you handling the different types of housing, you know, single-family versus townhome versus multifamily? How are you, how are you approaching that?
This is only single-family.
Only single families. Okay. So it wouldn't necessarily apply to a duplex or, okay. I think that's a good first step, and it seems like if somebody has a complaint, they can, it runs into that situation, they can appeal it, and then we can have further discussion. Is the idea behind the policy?
Correct. Yeah, we, we wanted to be the first line and then be able to, if there was a place where we say no, for whatever reason, then they could appeal it up to the council and see if there is some relief that they want to grant, that you guys would want to grant.
Okay. And again, I've been fortunate not to have to cash out in any way a, a home insurance policy. I mean, a home suffers significant damage. I mean, how does the insurance company decide how much they're gonna pay on that? Is it just a, a straight-assed amount where they're factoring in the use tax amounts that might be in? Like, like, I'm trying to make sure I understand.
It's actually how much your policy will, is written for. So you have, you have a limit on what your policy will cover. And then, once you get to that limit, then they'll, then it's, it shuts off.
Well, it's in my less catastrophic situation where I'm under my limit. I mean, are they going to write a check for a use tax that's waived? I mean, that, that's what I'm trying to.
Yeah, they, they, they'll, they'll write a check for the replacement of your, of the things that you're gonna have, like your windows, your every, they'll write a check for that amount. They won't get into the details.
They're not gonna factor in sales tax of a window from Home Depot or?
Typically not. I mean, it's like, here's what the value of that thing is. Here's what we're gonna write a check for.
Okay. I mean, that seems to me to at least address the concern of, of a double dipping. I don't know if you know something I don't. I don't have, again, I'm fortunate not to have had personal experience with, I need to use own insurance, but, okay.
And I've, I mean, personally, I had a, I had hail damage, broke all, all my windows in my house, had to replace the roof, had to replace all the siding. Insurance covered most of those things, the actual, they, they wrote me a check, and then I had to go do everything. So I had to to pay for all the vendors. I had to do all this. And whatever I was short, I had to pay out of my pocket if I was. In some cases, they gave me more for something, in other cases, they gave me less for things. And we had to negotiate and barter on all this stuff. It was a very torturous process, so.
Okay. I mean, I, again, I think this is a policy reflective of a, of a kind town. I don't think it leaves the town in any financial loss to, to say we're not gonna double, that we're not gonna double dip and collect a use tax on, on a specific residence. So I, I, I'm generally in favor of what I've been seeing here.
Robert. Oh, I'm sorry, Lisa.
Go, go ahead, Lisa.
So Matt, I just want to thank you for putting this together. I know we had gotten an email from the, the property owner who happens to actually be a friend of mine. So I do know that the amount that he's able to get from insurance is not going to cover the cost in order to rebuild. My roof is 12 years old, so I'm really hoping that tenure is not too firm, because my guess is insurance would not want to pay for a brand-new roof if they were valuing mine at, at 12 years old. But I think this is really good. Hopefully, it's not something that needs to be used very often. So I think we can all kind of look at that. And I, my question is, do you, do you ask for any proof that they're not getting enough money to cover this? Or is it just that you know that they're getting money from the insurance company and they're asking you, and we're kind of going to take people on their word? Is that, I mean, most people, if they got the money, they would just pay the fee. Is that correct?
Correct. We, we kind of, I mean, I talked to Robert a little bit about this. It was, and we don't really want to get into the business of picking apart, you know, whether the insurance, which parts and all that. It's more of like, the insurance is really just to say, this is a legitimate thing, that insurance has done their due diligence in the sense that it's an insurable event. If it was an uninsurable event, that means it was probably negligence or old age or some other thing that insurance, so that was the only reason why we wanted to use that. Not to go through line by line and try to figure it all out. And, and like we say, we wanted this to be very simple process, really. And, and so it's like, does it check all these boxes? Yes. And then we can kind of pass it along, kind of a thing.
Okay, thank you. And now the only other one I have a comment on is, it mentions a property owner may be considered, I'm on page 326 and 327 of the packet, but that may be considered for the program if they meet the following criteria. And one of them does exclude that if they don't live there. So that would mean like, for example, if I had a rental property that I owned in Timneth, and let's say there was a fire in that home, that I would not be able to request this. Is there a reason that we are excluding that? And the, the reason I ask is that that person will then, obviously, they'll have the costs to rebuild, but they'll also be potentially losing possibly a source of their income or something related to that.
We wanted to, we wanted to start here. We're not married to this particular thing, but it was kind of a way to say, okay, let's get it limited to the folks that are living in Timneth, that are the actual residence, property owner, kind of a thing. So we can certainly make modifications if you guys feel that's what you'd like to see, but that was our first step, was let's try to be the folks that are living here, the folks that are in that home, there to their benefit. But I agree, that is someplace that we could give a little bit on.
Well, how about if, if it comes up down the road, you could always come back to us, because hopefully, like I said, hopefully it won't be used often. Another part would be, I know we talked about, we have many homes now that are duplexes or threes or something like that. And if they own it, I feel like even though it's not a single-family home, it's, it's their single home. So maybe that's something down the road that we could potentially look at as well.
Kevin just pointed out, like, there may be folks that, like, buy a bunch of homes and they're renting them out at, like, a agency of sorts. And so you're like, okay, we want to provide the benefit to the, this resident homeowner, kind of a thing. So and also if there's, there is an appeal option here, too. So if it's like, hey, there's a reason to do this, they can appeal that as well.
Yeah, I, I definitely agree that I don't want the town to be profiting from someone's tragedy. The, when, when one of these claims are processed, I mean, obviously, the, the town has to, you know, incur some expenses in terms of dealing with the inspection and, and all of that. Is, is it fair to say that those expenses are far less than, than the use tax that we collect?
So for example, that, that project, I won't reveal all the numbers, but there's, the actual building permit was like 26,000 total. Of that 26,000, thirteen is, 13,000 is the use tax portion.
How could that be?
How can it be?
Twenty-six thousand dollars, three percent.
So this, the county.
Nowhere near 13,000.
The county collects like 4,000, because they have their own, they have their own tax. We have plan review that was, I mean, the value.
Would charge them 20%?
County charges eight, point eight percent. So.
Point eight. So if we're looking, let's say 30 to make it easy, that's only 240 dollars.
If you, it's 800,000 dollar valuation. So if you take that in half, 400,000 times point zero eight. So that's where you're gonna, I don't have, I'm not be able to do the math in my head, but that's how you get there.
Okay.
So, and then there's all of the plan reviews. So they have to submit all their documents, so that they, the rebuilding documents, they have to meet all current codes. They have to go through an extensive inspection process. So there is a dollar amount that is for our plan reviewers and our inspectors to actually conduct their work. There's administrative costs and checking it, you know, doing all the processing. So, so yes, half, there's, it's not all. I mean, it's a pretty, still a very big permit dollar amount.
I, I would just like to make sure that the town is covering our expenses. I'm not looking to
Right.
to profit, but, but make sure that, you know, we're, we're covering that. I've been through this. My insurance payout did, you know, specifically include we're, we're, we're paying all these fees that, that you're gonna have to charge. I do think as part of this application, maybe it makes sense to, to ask them, you know, this is covered by insurance, and part of the insurance claim did include a payout for whatever. And that if they already recovered it from insurance, I, I do think we should have a mechanism to, to stop the, the double dipping. If nothing else, to make sure that they're not getting themselves into some kind of insurance fraud, fraud problem. But, you know, as, as long as we're, we're asking those, those questions, I'm not even necessarily suggesting that we need to go, you know, verify with the insurance company. But, but I think if, you know, we ask them to submit a sworn statement that insurance paid, been compensated for this fee.
I'll ask Carolyn a quick question. So we have, we're gonna put in place an agreement, a small two-page agreement or so that, that's between the town and this property owner. So they perform, you know, they can't just pocket 10 grand and then not do what they say they're gonna do, or whatever the dollar amount is. But we could probably put into the agreement some language that says, hey, you've got, you know, you, you're obligated to not do the things that, you know, insurance fraud and otherwise, so to speak. So we, you'd have to clarify how the language would need to read, but some kind of language in there that gives us the out.
Yes, we could, we could come up with some language. Sometimes what they say is, there's insurance covers, but it's short of the total project cost. And there's just an affirmation that it was short of the total project cost, so that you're not worrying about were they specifically reimbursed for use tax or what. It's just, it was, because a lot of policies do have, like Matt noted, some have a rebuild clause, and some of them say we'll rebuild up to 400,000 dollars, or whatever they have added as, put in as a maximum amount.
Thanks.
Mark, can I just give a, a public service announcement for everyone out there? This actually made my husband and I relook at some of our policies. So I would suggest that as your home value increases, that every once in a while, whether it's every other year or something like that, that everybody takes a good look at their policy to make sure that the policy increases as your home value increases, because I, I don't know if that happened to this owner or not, I'm not. But I know it's happened to certain people that insurance didn't cover it because they didn't increase the value, so.
Nobody's had their evaluations go way up, right? I guess I'll make one more public service announcement there. If, in case anybody's planning to, to get a little crazy in any post-inauguration parties, I would just make sure you keep the crazy a little under control, so we don't get any problems.
Mark, can I say one more comment?
Yes, you may.
I just, I do have concerns about how complicated this could be, but I'm gonna trust town staff. I think you guys did, appears to be thorough work in the process, so I, I appreciate that. I just think it's gonna be emotional. And so if there's these emotional items that happen, I just, I think it's gonna be tough. And so I just want to take that into consideration for this policy as well.
Yep, thank you.
So I think we're being requested, do we direct staff to come up with a policy that we can review?
So the, the version that's in the packet, if you like that, the way it sits right now, you could approve, we have a resolution there. If you want to move on it, or if you want to make changes and have us come back with a new one or revisions, let us know that. But it's set up right now that you could approve something tonight, and it would be this policy that's in front of you.
I don't know if you guys have looked at it or not close enough to feel comfortable passing it, or should we wait till next meeting?
I mean, I do see that it was labeled discussion slash possible action item, but I'd probably feel more comfortable noticing it again. And if anyone wants to provide any comment, let them.
I'm sorry, would you feel more comfortable to what?
To, to notice it again and have it as an agenda item on a separate.
Brett? Okay. So I don't, if, if anybody has some suggestions on what's in the packet, why don't you direct them to Matt, and we'll bring this up for discussion at the next meeting. Not discussion for, as a proposal.
Okay. Would you like another presentation as well at the next meeting? Briefer, more brief.
But brief.
Brief present, brief presentation. Well, thanks for giving me the floor for a little bit tonight.
Okay. Anybody have anything else today? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.